Well, good morning. It's Wednesday, November 2nd. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting at Courthouse Square in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast. If you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's the day after a birthday. Thirty-six. I know I got it right. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll go right into our consent agenda.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move today's consent agenda. Under Board of Commissioners, we have one OLCC application recommended for approval. It's MGM Salem LLC DBA Middle Grove Market in Salem, Oregon. Under Public Works, two items. Approve an order appointing Troy Wheeler as Marion County Building Official effective November 2nd, 2016, and approve an order appointing Gilman Joe Fenimore as Planning Director and Zoning Administrator effective November 2nd, 2016.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Consent calendar is done. We'll move into our first action item this morning under the Assessor's Office. And Tom and Leslie are here for a presentation on considering approval of terminating an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Businesses' Services for processing manufactured structured ownership transactions effective December 31st of 2016. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. ... Little background on this. Oregon Department of Motor Vehicles, when I started with the county, was...
Tom, can you pull that microphone up just a little closer?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you.
So when I started with the county 22 years ago, I believe the Department of Motor Vehicles was keeping track of the ownership of manufactured structures. You know, at one time, they started off as trailers, you know, where they had hitches attached and axles on them. Some still do, some of the older ones. Manufactured structures have evolved over time, and after June 15th, 1976, they were required to be constructed to HUD standards, so they had some codes they had to meet. In 2005, the responsibility for tracking ownership interests of manufactured structures in Oregon went to the Building Codes Division of the Department of Consumer and Business Services. Oregon County assessors at that time began processing the ownership transfers as an agent of the Building Codes Division. Prior to the transfer of their responsibilities, the Department of Motor Vehicles required DMV to contact the county assessors for documentation, proof that the property taxes had been paid up to date. So county assessors had an interest in making sure that taxes were paid and collected, and that we had the correct ownership on the accounts when they were transferred. So the process, the proposed process has been changed. Let's see. In anticipation of, let's see, well, back up a little bit. This last year, the assessors brought to Building Codes Division the concern that their system wasn't working properly. A lot of counties were having problems logging on, effectively doing their jobs with the When DCBS actually let us know what was happening, they admitted that there was issues with the system and planned to replace it. It was due to be replaced as of July 1st. That has long passed. Now, they plan to have it replaced by January 15th of 2017. It looks like they're making some progress. Their concept seems to be an electronic online process for much of it. They have asked the county assessors if they want to continue participating in the process. And they have submitted, they've given us a draft of an IGA they would like us to sign. I think there's a couple of counties that want to go forward doing that. So, I'd like to mention a couple of the issues that we have with the proposal. The county would be obligated to process all of the transactions brought to us, whether the staff, our staff believes that the supporting documentation or circumstances are fraudulent or not. Failure to do so would result in an immediate termination of our IGA. The IGA has added significant language to limit the liability of the state, and I believe it puts more of the liability on the county. I believe this to be one of the concerns of our legal counsel. Counties who do not opt out of the new IGA could potentially be required to process transactions for other neighboring counties. So any transaction that comes into our office, this would create a potentially overwhelming burden on some counties that don't have the staffing to do that, and I'm not sure what it would do to our volume. There's a minimum estimated workload increase of approximately 20% to 25% with the proposed new system if we were to be processing the transactions just from our county. They want us to track ownership interests, or not ownership interests, but lien holder interests as well as ownership interest. Payment of title and trip permit fees using the new Exela software would require our office to, we believe, to open a U.S. Bank Government Merchant Account to enable us to receive payments by credit card as a condition of using the new software. This would be an additional unanticipated expenditure currently unaccounted for in our fiscal year 1617 budget. A big issue is our customers. What would happen with our customers in either scenario? Impact to customers who currently transact business in our office would be minimal, we believe. Building Codes Division currently has an office in West Salem. In terms of accessibility, it's probably easier to access for most people than right here downtown, our current assessor office. Also is very convenient for Polk County customers. Transactions initiated online would go through the Building Codes Division either way. They're also opening offices in Pendleton and Coos Bay to help take care of other county I believe an inconvenience to some of the manufactured homeowners would be the fact that they're expected to do their piece of the processing online, and some of those customers may not have the capability to do that. So, I'm not sure how that's going to work out. That would be the same either way, whether we process the paperwork or Building Codes Division. Not only is this program not self-supporting, it is not aligned with any statutory requirements of administrating the assessment and taxation system program. I think at a time when the assessors got involved in 2005, there was deficiencies in the information we were getting, so assessors felt like there was a real interest on their part to make sure the information was accurate and our customers were served. But it would be similar to, I think, similar to the Clerk's Office doing much of the work that title companies currently do in making sure all the documentation was correct and in place before they record a document. I recommend that you approve providing notice, approve us to provide notice to DCBS that we intend to end our current intergovernmental agreement. The agreement requires, the current agreement requires 60 days' notice, and if approved today, that would put us very close to the beginning of the next calendar year.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
I have a question, a couple of questions, just for people that may be watching. You mentioned customers a few times. Who, the impact to customers? So, I'm thinking of manufactured homes. Some are in, what do I want to say, in a park where they maybe leased the ground, so they're not paying taxes on the ground, they're paying a lease payment for their manufactured home. Regardless, so you've got a land issue that is separate from a manufactured home issue. So the customer is the owner of the manufactured home, not necessarily the landowner here.
Correct. And in this processing, many times the customers are the companies that build manufactured homes, the dealers, realtors, title companies.
Okay. So somebody, so there's two levels. Somebody buys a new manufactured home and sets it up in Marion County. It has to be registered through this process, and now they're going to have to go deal direct with CBS or...
DCBS.
DCBS, right.
Right.
Forgot the department part. So they'll have to do directly. And so manufacturers that sell that home will probably do that paperwork and be able to do that for them. Would that be accurate?
I believe so, yes. Currently, under the situation we have now, if we don't feel comfortable processing the paperwork, and there's different reasons why we wouldn't feel comfortable if we don't think the information's accurate or legitimate, we can refuse to process that, and they go to Building Codes Division and get it worked out now.
Okay. So then the second level of customer, since we use that word, would be somebody who's owned one for 10 years, for example. Maybe they own the land underneath out in Marion County, and now they're going to sell it to somebody else. So the land is a separate transaction from the modular home, correct?
Correct.
And if they're using a title company, a realtor or a title company to do that, they're probably going to handle all that paperwork for them. If they do it by themselves, and that's where you said that might be the issue of some people, because they're going to have to register or transfer the modular home online with DCBS.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many transactions a year we deal with today?
About 1,000.
About 1,000 in Marion County.
About 1,000 modular transactions a year in Marion County.
Yes. These would only be homes that are taxed as personal property and not affixed to real property at all. So if they're affixed to real property, basically, they're de-titled as a manufactured home, and it would not affect those at all, just the ones that are in parks or on leased land or something of that nature.
Those are the only ones affected?
Yes.
Okay.
Personal property manufactured.
Oh, so I just want to recap what you're saying. So we've been doing this since 2005, something like that.
2005, correct.
Giving it back to the state, right? So the consumer, probably the customer, is not going to see a difference. Somebody's going to do it. Do they have the capacity to do it?
Yes.
And they're open to doing it, right?
Yes, yes.
They've got the staff support. And they're just over in West Salem, right?
Correct.
So it's not like it's a lot harder than we are.
Right. For us, it's a different decision than if they weren't, if they didn't have an office right here.
Right, yeah.
But they do.
Yeah. So it should be pretty invisible to the consumer. So it just means less workload, less liability for us.
Right.
Someone else is taking on that role.
Right. We still would be involved in letting DCBS know that the taxes are paid up to date or what the payoff amount is.
Right. So it sounds like it's...
Pretty simple.
Yeah, a pretty straightforward decision for us to make.
I think so.
I just, I did have one other question I wrote down as I was listening. Manufactured home, you talked about leaning. So there's two different tax statements, one for the property. Let's say somebody owns the property and a manufactured home on the property, they get two statements from us.
Correct.
If it hasn't been de-titled.
Okay. If it's been de-titled, it becomes all part of the property.
Then we treat it just like a regular house that was built on site.
Okay. So if somebody, the lean process, if somebody, a contractor's done some work, do they still, are they still able to go through us for leaning? Does this change the lean process that somebody goes through?
No.
No?
Not at all.
Okay. That's the same. All right.
Okay. So I will go ahead and move that the board approved terminating the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services for processing manufactured structure ownership transactions effective December 31st, 2016.
And I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item is Public Works, consider approval of incoming funds, like that sound, incoming funds retroactive grant agreement with the Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management for $130,458 for voice data communication system assessment and functional system design through September 30th, 2007. Good morning, Ed.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ed Fleck, the County Emergency Manager. The grant in question would provide resources to develop a plan which will provide a roadmap for the county and all the agencies, the public safety agencies in the county, to ensure that they can all work interoperably for the next 10 years. It will replace a plan that was drafted in 2006. Since 2006, there's been numerous systems upgrades. The Sheriff's Office system, for example, the city of Salem, and recently, the Metcom 911 group has conducted an assessment of their radio needs. The bottom line with this plan is it will ensure that all of those radio systems developed by those agencies can work together in an emergency, creating interoperability. The grant addresses a need that was identified by the Emergency Management Grant Steering Committee last year and was developed by the Sheriff's Office with the support of the city of Salem, Metcom, and various other agencies, police, fire, and cities across the county. The plan will envision the future operating environment. You might have heard of FirstNet, which is a national initiative to create an Internet Public Safety Network, and we envision the life of this plan to be 10 years.
Done? Again?
I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
Digging through the papers here. So is the $130,000 for planning, or is it for buying equipment, or is it for both?
This is going to just provide the plan.
Okay.
It's, it won't produce any equipment, but it's a necessary precondition for us in the future to apply for Homeland Security grant dollars that would provide equipment.
Okay. And so then I guess the last time, I mean, it's been a long time since we've talked about this, but the last time I remember a discussion about this interoperability is a vision, but it's easier said than done because, like, different systems are on different bands and, you know, and everybody's, you know, somebody's bought this thing, and then somebody else just bought something else, and so how did, so how do you start aligning that? Is the technology more amenable to that in 2016 than it was 10 years ago when we had this conversation?
Yes, Commissioner. As the radio systems have gone from analog to digital, there are various techniques to ensure interoperability that don't require any work on the same radio system. The reality is that there'll be various systems operating in the county for the foreseeable future. This will just provide a roadmap that will allow all the various agencies to ensure that purchases they do make are mindful and meet the interoperability expectation so that regardless of systems, we'll all have the ability to communicate.
I guess my last question is, you said that it would be in an emergency, so is this like just an everyday emergency, like a crime's being committed, or so interoperability is something that we deal with constantly, or is it just like when the big one hits, all of a sudden we'll go to some magical thing that will bring us all together for that one event? Or something in between?
Commissioner, this interoperability is an important goal every day, so that when the Sheriff's Office and a fire district respond to the same scene, they can communicate. This plan that will also be mindful of the need for this system to operate in a catastrophic event, and will identify ways to make the public safety radio system more resilient.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
John?
The, here is, probably 15 years ago or so, there was a big attempt to get the feds to create a public safety bandwidth, and they didn't do it. How are you going to do this without a set bandwidth for everybody to use?
Sir, the, the systems today operate across the VHF and USF frequencies. The goal of interoperability will, I think largely be met through software-based radios that can crossband, and looking ahead, not too far in the future, we'll have a FirstNet system that the state CIO is working to field. So it'll move from radio to Internet communication. So there'll never be a day where one frequency works for all agencies, but there's numerous ways that this plan will identify to make sure that they can work together on disparate systems.
Is there a way to keep those calls secure when they're crossing bandwidths that
There is. Currently, some law enforcement bans are not broadcasting the clear, most are, but future, this system will have to take into account the need for secure communications.
That's interesting, we're talking about this, because I remember we did a mock emergency, I think it was a fire or something here in the building. We sat here with Salem Fire, with Transit, Salem PD, and we had to have somebody with a walkie-talkie out with the fire department relaying what the police department or the sheriff was saying. They couldn't talk to each other. We couldn't talk on radios. We had to do it with our little handheld walkie-talkie. So this is a plan, this is a grant to help that plan to try to, down the future, improve that type of situation, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Good. All right. We're ready.
You're ready? So I will move the approval of a retroactive grant agreement with the Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management for $130,458 for voice and data communication system assessment and functional system design through September 30th, 2017.
Okay. We have a motion, and I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thanks, Ed. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, Commissioners.
One of those areas of emergency management that we'll all be thankful for, hopefully never. Okay. Consider approval of incoming funds infectious waste disposal agreement with Waste Watch Inc. through September 20th, 2017. Welcome, Brian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you, as an agreement, as part of our Box Medical Waste Program, this has been in place since the early 1990s. Today, we have 13 customers that have signed our agreement to deliver material to Cavanta. We have a multi-step approval process that the applicant must go through before giving a customer. That initial step is to make the request of Public Works. If we're able and willing to accept the new generator's waste, we then take that to Cavanta. Cavanta assures that the customer is willing to go through their material approval and delivery process. This is involved in the process, the boxing, the handling, material manifest, and scheduling on how to properly move the material. The customer then signs Cavanta's profiled waste process agreement. That is then returned back to Public Works, where we provide the customer infectious waste disposal agreement. And again, this is to make it very clear to the potential customer of what is acceptable as part of this program, and again, to assure that there's no fetal tissue involved, and also gives us right-hand inspection and checking of the records to assure that that has been taken care of. Once agreements have all been signed, material is brought together and was brought before yourselves for approval. This agreement is actually for a dental care company in Portland. Worth noting is they anticipate less than 10 tons of volume to be coming in over an annual period of time. Our current volume for Box Medical Waste in 2015 was 460 tons.
So just to clarify, this is, we've been doing this type of medical waste for a very long time.
Correct.
This is an additional contract, add 10 tons for a dental program out of Portland. Any questions you want to clarify?
I really don't have any questions.
Okay.
Ready for your motion?
Pretty straightforward.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the infectious waste disposal agreement with Waste Watch Inc. through September 20th, 2017.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Brian, you're still up.
So this is basically an exact duplication of the one we just covered, but this is for Hudson Garbage Service. They are expanding their sharps collection program for Columbia County. Again, worth noting is they have completed the process, complete with signed signatures, and they too will be bringing in less than 10 tons annually.
And same safeguards and everything you described from the last one would...
Yes, correct. All the steps have been completed.
Right. You ready for a motion?
You bet.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the infectious waste disposal agreement with Hudson Garbage Service through September 20th, 2017.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And one more time, you're up. Consider order approval of yard debris and wood waste disposal fee increase at North Marion County Disposal Facility and Salem Kaiser Recycling Transfer Stations.
So this last summer, our eight franchise haulers presented their cost of service analysis, and they had three kind of main drivers that affected their rates. One was our $20 per ton increase for garbage disposal, some lost revenue from recycled commodity pricing, and then an increased tip fee for their yard and wood waste processing within their contracts. As last summer kind of progressed into fall, all haulers went in front of the 20 jurisdictions and got approval for their rate increases, and we too increased our rates October 1st on our tipping fee at North Marion and Salem Kaiser to reflect our $20 per ton for garbage increase. Now, with the focus being on the garbage increase, Republic Services failed to make us aware of the yard debris tip fee increase. So attached to the part of your packet is their notification to us. Once we received that, we went through the process. As it's attached, Republic Services are requesting a $12.49 increase that has also been part of the other hauler's rates. Now, something to be noted is this is for Salem and Kaiser Transfer Station, so this is our public coming and using. This is not for the franchise hauler's rates. This is our tip fee there. This fee has not been increased since 1992, along with all our other rates that I mentioned earlier. So this would raise our rate from $47 per ton to $59.49. Now, trying to help protect our customers, we're keeping the minimum at $15. Under the old rate, that would have been 640 tons you'd be able to dispose of for $15. With the new minimum adjustment, that'll go to 500 tons. So it's still a fair amount for that minimum.
500 tons?
500 pounds, sorry.
What was the old max?
640 pounds.
Okay.
So if this is approved, we plan to notify with postings at both transfer stations immediately, update our websites, and then make this effective December 1st.
So, question, are we already being charged this new rate by, so we're biting the bullet on this one now?
Yeah. They delayed and made it effective November 1st for us, yeah. So it'll be just for the month of November that we will...
Okay. We saw this, this is interesting, because we saw this in our presentations. I know Dennis is sitting out there with Alan. When we, when we saw this last, whenever it was summer, this was coming to the haulers. We knew it was coming. We just didn't get a notice from...
Correct.
Republic. We probably could have anticipated that.
Yes.
And the difference between this and the other rate at the transfer, not transfer station, but at Cavanta, where actually, this, Cavanta, we actually took the action to raise this, to raise the rate. This is a rate that is actually a 45% increase I'm looking at, that another vendor in Polk County, or is this down in Corvallis?
This would be Benton County, yeah.
Benton County is actually passing on, so it's just a straight pass-through that we're being charged, and we're just passing it on, so... we're being charged, and we're just passing it on, so. And again, for our citizens that use this service, they can still drive across the scale for $15. It's just when they hit the 500 or above, they're going to see an additional charge versus 640.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm trying to think, every time I've gone over there with a trailer full of yard debris, if I've ever gone over, it's a lot of yard debris.
It's a lot of yard debris.
Don't take it when it's wet.
Correct, yes. Squeeze it a little bit first.
Yeah, squeeze the water out, so. Okay.
So, I don't have any questions. We talked about this at management update, and Commissioner Cameron's hit all the high points in addition to what's been said, so I will make a motion approving the order increasing the yard debris and wood waste disposal fee at North Marion County Disposal Facility and Salem Kaiser Recycling Transfer Station.
I'll second the motion. No further, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you much.
Well, you got, you know, I'd say three strikes and you're out, Brian, but three strikes and we're done for the day, and the Cubs live on for another day, that's pretty Somebody's going to win the World Series tonight that hasn't won it in a very, very long time, either one of them. So, I'll read our calendar. At noon today, we're going to be at the Woodburn, at least I think I'm going to be there, I don't think anybody else will be there with me, sheriff may be there. Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luis's Taqueria at 523 Front Street in Woodburn. Others will be busy here in other meetings, not enjoying the good food. Thanks, gentlemen. Thursday, 9:30 a.m., Department Head, Elected Officials Meeting here in the Commissioner's Board Room on the fifth floor in this building. Thursday at 2:00 p.m., Midwellamette Homeless Initiative Affordable Housing and Financial Subcommittee's Joint Meeting, location here in this building in the Commissioner's Board Room on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 7th of November, 8:30 a.m., Calendar Review in this building in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday, the 7th, at 9:00 a.m., Management Update in this building on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 7th, at 4:00 p.m., Midwellamette Homeless Initiative Task Force, I think that's the full task force, the location is at the Kaiser Civic Center, 930 Chamawa Road, Northeast in Kaiser. Tuesday, the 8th, 7:30 a.m., State and Marion County Meeting, location Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. Tuesday, the 8th, at noon, Midwellamette Homeless Initiative Transitional Housing Shelters Subcommittee, location in the Commissioner's Board Room in this building on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 8th, at 1:00 p.m., Insight Job Council, Insight Board Room Meeting, 626 High Street Suite 305 here in Salem. On Tuesday, the 8th, at 4:00 p.m., Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council in this building on the fifth floor in the Commissioner's Board Room. On Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., we're right back here to repeat, but it won't be the same, it'll be new business, different. And then on Wednesday, the 9th, also City of Salem Farewell Celebration at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street. And I will not be able to be there because I'm going to go to the, what was that thing? The Saniam River Canyon wastewater feasibility study or something like that that we saw a presentation on that they're going to give to the canyon?
That's on the 9th.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you left something out that's very important on the 8th. There's an election taking place on the 8th.
We don't have to notice that.
Yeah.
I think everybody knows about that.
Yeah.
It's on my calendar that's printed.
I had two people today said, "I didn't see your name on the ballot. What happened?" And I said, "I'm thankful." There's a lot going on, that's for sure. Okay. Anything else we want to talk about? We've had a couple of big work sessions this week.
Yeah. Saniam Canyon Work Sessions.
Yeah, we had that work session.
Cybersecurity Work Session.
Uh-huh.
That was very interesting.
We had some green lights and some red lights.
Yeah.
Some yellow lights, yeah. But overall, last night, thank you, that was really good.
Dr. Felitti, Felitti, Felitti is how he says his name.
Felitti.
You know, it's interesting, since we had that on cybersecurity, I've been getting bad stuff on my computer. I immediately send it to spam, but I don't know why, they're all of a sudden starting to pump stuff to me.
It's interesting, because personally, I've had three people tell me that they've been getting emails in my name under a different, and finally looked at it, somebody made up an email address. I mean, you can do that?
Sure.
It's just...
People at home really need to be very careful.
Rapid, yeah.
And have some good security companies there are that you can download, you have to pay for it, but they're really, keep your stuff secure. And even the modern Wi-Fi systems are very secure now. You have an old Wi-Fi system, you ought to replace it with a new one, because the old ones aren't quite so secure.
I like to stay with what works. Anything else? And we're adjourned.